Trustees attending remotely, I would like to verify your presence. Trustee Powell, are you there?
I'm here.
Trustee Kennedy, are you there? Trustee Agnew, are you there? Student trustee McGuire, are you there?
Yes, I am present.
Thank you. Call to order, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and will also be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Trustees, in order to be recognized, please use the hand up feature in teams to be automatically placed in queue. And please remember to turn your desk mics on when you speak. Item one point one, land acknowledgement, the opening prayer, Our Father and National Anthem. I now ask staff to lead us, start us off with the land acknowledgement.
Halton, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surround Dino greatly.
Are steeped in indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty land.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
Four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
And animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All these wonderful elements of creation exists.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. Trustee Yaboa is not here, so Director Klein could please lead us with the opening prayer, the Our Father National Anthem.
Thank you Chair, last week was the feast day of Our Lady of Lourdes and strangely enough, today is the feast day of Saint Bernadette. And so I will lead us in a prayer that is a prayer to Saint Bernadette for the intercession, for the sick, Father and of the Son of the Holy Spirit amen. Dear Lord, through the intercession of Saint Bernadette, we seek your divine healing for the sick and suffering. Saint Bernadette, a humble servant, witnessed the miraculous apparitions of Our Lady of Lourdes. And we ask for her powerful intercession on behalf of those in need of healing. May your divine love and grace touch their hearts and restore their bodies to full health. Grant them strength and courage during this time of suffering. And let your healing presence be a source of comfort and hope. In the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, we place our trust in you, O Lord, and ask for your healing mercy. If you join with me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven.
Thank you Director Klein for the opening prayer. But before we proceed, I just want to recognize that we have some new student trustees here. Superintendent Del Sordo could just introduce the student trustees.
Thank you. On February the twelfth, I had the distinct pleasure of sitting for two and a half hours to listen to the amazing candidate speeches. And we have two of our three student trustees who have been elected and appointed for our next year. I'd like to introduce to you Robespierre Hannah, who is a grade ten honor student from Holy Trinity Secondary School. He serves as the grade ten representative on student council and participates in as a senator for our board. Robespierre is a member of the Equity and Change Committee, the Robotics Team, and the Chess Club. Additionally, he is involved in community activities and initiatives, as well as he volunteers at the Saint Mary Food Bank since June two thousand and twenty-two. So welcome Robespierre Hannah. And next to Robespierre Hannah is Velini Perrasam, Ram, sorry. Velini is currently a grade ten honor roll student at Assumption Catholic Secondary School. She demonstrates a very high level of commitment to her coursework and the ability to manage the many leadership and extracurricular tasks, including the board's student senate, the teen ambassador for the Canadian Association for Girls in Science, a dedicated member of DECA, co-founding of Assumptions First Asian Heritage Club. Velini is actively involved in the Art Council and Best Buddy Programs, in addition as leader and training volunteer with McMaster University. So welcome Velini. And the third from Halton, sorry, North Halton, is Maya Sophia Adeli. Maya Sophia is currently a grade eleven honor roll student at Christ the King Catholic Secondary School. She exhibits strong leadership and is committed to positively impacting the school community through her roles in student council and as a president of student senate. Additionally, Maya Sophia has been recognized with awards for literacy contests, speech competitions, as well as a certificate of appreciation for dedicating hundreds of volunteer hours to the Royal Canadian League. And I'd like to present to you our student trustees for two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six.
Thank you Superintendent Del Sordo for introducing our students. Welcome to this very interesting meeting and we are looking forward to you joining us here. So with that, I shall move on to item one point two. Motion arising from in camera, there was one motion from the in camera session that will require a vote in the public session. I will read that motion. Can you put it up on the screen? Thank you. Resolved, the Halton Catholic District School Board approved the centrally negotiated and previously ratified compensation increase to our non-union employees. Looking for a mover please. Trustee Ohan Chanara moves.
I can second. Powell.
Powell, I shall now, there will be no discussion, I'll take it to a recorded vote. Trustee Ohan Chanara.
I'm in favor.
Vice Chair Murphy. Trustee Kelly. Oh, sorry, sorry. Trustee Sanders. Trustee Agnew. Trustee Philbert. Trustee McGuire.
In favor.
Trustee Yaboa. Trustee Carabella. Oh, you're there, trustee Yaboa. Trustee Yaboa, are you there?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy. You have five in favor, none opposed, no abstention, motion carries. Shall now move on to our next order of business, which is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda and do trustees want any item removed from the consent agenda? Trustee Carabella, is your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I would like to remove item six point one point two point four. The school fundraising activities policy.
Thank you. Okay, any other changes trustees? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended, looking for a mover please. Trustee Carabella moves. Looking for a seconder? Second by trustee Murphy, I'll take it to a recorded vote. So you're voting on the approval of the agenda as amended. Trustee Vice Chair Murphy. Trustee Kelly. Trustee Sanders. Trustee Agnew, he's not there. Trustee McGuire.
Um, in favor.
Yaboa.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
In favor.
Kennedy is not there, trustee Ohan Chanara.
In favor.
We have six in favor, none opposed, no abstention, motion carries, the agenda is approved. We move on to our next order of business, which is number three, item number three, declarations of conflict of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest to be declared tonight? Seeing none, we move on to item number four, which is presentations. Four point one, senior staff update math action plan. Update Director Klein, please introduce our presentation.
Returning to us by popular demand, we have before us Superintendent Michael Skripic. Easy to say, hard to spell. And Superintendent Skripic will be giving us an update on the math action plan. Clearly, the focus on student achievement is something that Halton Catholic District School Board has been proud of for decades, if not generations. And math is a priority for the province of Ontario and it is a priority for our board. It's reflected in our MASP, it's reflected in our student achievement plans. And Michael's going to give us a, an update on how things are proceeding with that. And so welcome Superintendent Skripic.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Trustees of the board, I'm here to present as part of my mandate to you, the trustees, our progress with regard to mathematics and reference to our math achievement action plan. We have a mandate from the province to present on these, but I want to continue to say that what drives our planning continues to be the multi-year strategic plan, specifically in the area of achieving. I work with Dr. Colmore and Director Klein as well to kind of identify where other areas of believing, belonging, and becoming also fit into the work that we do. I'm highlighting specifically our achieving pillar this time. As mentioned, we have provincial goals, the province has laid out for us what we're looking for and specifically in the document Taking Action in Mathematics. Look for it by provincial action. There are three main areas, rather than read them all, I'll just kind of boil it down to the first one is the curriculum. So what the province has asked us to teach students. The second one is the content, so what feeds into the curriculum, what do we need to know about how students learn the mathematics? And number three is the student, so what do we want to know more about the student? And what do we already know about the student in order to support them in their achievement? I'm going to start with resources. I always, I, the resources we, we use in our classroom tend to represent our beliefs and what we, how we teach mathematics and the pedagogy. So the two that we have is Math Up and Mathology. Math Up came to this board in two thousand and twenty, when the new curriculum was released. And taking a look in reflection, previous teams decided that to enhance that, we also use Mathology. Both of these are in the Trillium list from the province. And the Trillium list, so that everybody knows, is the list of approved resources that we can use. Barring no approved resources, a principal can decide together with their team which ones they would like to use, but we are taking a look at Math Up and Mathology. Supplemental resources in this board include Knowledge Hook and TVO Learn. This year, we revised the scope and sequence after doing some, some surveys with teachers in the previous year, understanding the need out there, so we revised the scope and sequence for grade three to six, and this is what we've used to monitor how people are using our resources. So to date, we have seven hundred and twenty-two unique access points for the scope and sequence from a source that we had set up. Seven hundred and twenty-two is actually a very good number, given that we're actually monitoring mostly grades one to eight teachers. So we're quite happy with that number because that is looking like some pretty strong compliance with using the resources we provided. The digital tools, so we received funding from the province in the form of an R E P grant to provide digital tools to our students. Specifically, we have chosen Knowledge Hook to be the tool that we have provided. We have seven hundred and eighty-five teachers and twenty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-six students utilizing Knowledge Hook right now at H C D S B, which tends to be a very good number for us and what we've been trying to monitor, the province specifically is asking us how our grade three, six, seven, eight, and nine students are using it. And we're looking at some pretty strong compliance there. I just wanted to kind of spotlight a school tomorrow. I apologize, I included February twentieth in your notes, but February nineteenth is tomorrow. That Knowledge Hook has taken a great interest in the activities happening at one of our schools, Our Lady of Peace. So tomorrow, Knowledge Hook will be doing some videos of the staff, specifically Linda Chong, a grade three teacher, Principal Penny Uniyaki, and some board representatives will be interviewed. Ms. Chong is using Knowledge Hook with her class to consolidate student learning, understand student learning need, and provide necessary interventions. And the staff that will be included will be Maureen Asland, who is the consultant specifically for technology-enabled learning, but also the consultant for the school that supports some of the student achievement planning, and our math consultant Keta Twelveon de Reuterquette. So we're looking forward to welcoming Knowledge Hook tomorrow and getting them to show just how great our board is and something that we already know. Also, on that vein, the digital math tools is also supporting that grant, is also supporting our participation in the Caribou Math Contest. I had a target of fifteen hundred students, I'm happy to say we surpassed that target, we're already at a hundred and fifty percent of that goal. We have two thousand two hundred and forty-two H C D S B students participating. If you take away the, if you take away most of the students who wouldn't be eligible to write, we're looking at close to ten percent now of our students having had a chance to write the Caribou Math Contest. And that's not taking away from other contests that will be taking place. The University of Waterloo Math Contest is, will also be writing, and I'll be talking about in a little bit. Some highlights, St. Ignatius of Laola right now has the bragging rights in the province, they are first in the province in achievement for the Caribou Cup. Corpus Christi is sixth, and St. Catary Tecuhitan is twelfth right now of the schools in the province. Two students from St. Ignatius Laola are actually at seventh and eighth place in Ontario and forty-eighth and fifty-eighth, so in the top one hundred of the world. And that, we're talking about at least two thousand to three thousand students across the world writing. And then with even more competition as they get into the lower grades. A grade eight student at Our Lady of Victory placed first in the world in grade seven, eight, this year in January. Grade five student from Guardian Angels placed first in the world. And that basically means they got a perfect score. And a student from Holy Trinity placed first in the world in January in a grade nine, ten contest. Lots to talk about here. And then November and October, and some additional recognitions that we had in November, a Canadian martyr student placed first. And October, a grade nine student from St. Catary placed first, and two placed in the top five hundred worldwide. So we are very excited to be able to talk about this and excited that I feel like there's gathering a little bit of momentum right now with respect to their interest in the Caribou Math Contest, but not taking away from other contests because there's other really worthwhile ones. Caribou offers the opportunity because it's quite easy to implement and it gets assessed pretty quickly. The University of Waterloo, we have contests happening across our secondary schools at the end of February. So grade nine, ten, and eleven students will be, have afforded the opportunity to write for the University of Waterloo, with results to be announced, I think sometime in May. And central staff, including myself, will be working with schools to gain interest in the grade seven and eight contests for the University of Waterloo in May, takes place about the second week of May. Moving along into improved learning. Part of, one of the metrics I've been using that I shared with, with the board in my first presentation was working with school administrators. So all school administrators worked one-to-one with me in identifying a content area, which I'll kind of elaborate on in a little bit. Forty-six out of forty-eight of them met with me in November, December to develop their math numeracy goals. And we're looking to support two specific areas, as I mentioned in October, a content area. So something very specific such as data or spatial sense or number. And we want to even refine that a little bit further, so under spatial sense, for example, you might be looking at something like the concept of area and high-impact instructional practices, I'll elaborate a little bit further. Within our board, we identified, the majority of schools identified one of two areas, which is data or spatial sense, with a very small few identifying number sense. And I just kind of shared this graph up here, this is the data that we get from E Q O. So this is some of the information that I was using with principals to help identify what they were specifically looking at. This data here is data for our entire board, and it's from the data strand. So what you're looking at on this graph, the first bar actually tells you how many of our students answered these questions, how many questions are answered correctly by students in our board. So on average, fifty-six percent of the questions in data were answered correctly. That compares, for example, to sixty-eight percent of the questions were answered correctly in number, or sixty-eight percent of the questions were answered correctly in algebra. In comparison to the province, that was sixty, sixty-four percent of the question, or sorry, fifty-four percent of the questions in data were answered correctly. And sixty-nine percent, and this is what we tend to look at in our board, because if you wanted all students in the board to receive a level three or meeting standard, you would need sixty-nine percent of the questions in the data strand answered correctly. So what we did as a group and as principals and administrators, I let the team in kind of analyzing this data specific to their school to understand which area of mathematics might they need to focus on a little bit more moving forward. That's not at the detriment to any of the other areas, they still need to teach and continue to teach well the other areas of mathematics, but just to put a specific focus on it, taking a look at some of the underlying curriculum and understanding what students may need a little bit more understanding in. And trust me, if I had more time, I could talk on and on about that. Here's just a visual graphic, fifty-one percent of our schools have the data strand as their focus. So we know that analyzing data is one of the main features of the future, the future jobs of tomorrow. So looking forward to supporting our students with that, forty percent of our schools have an area of focus in spatial sense, and nine percent have identified number as their focus. So how are we doing this? We actually have taken a look at some of the budget and we're able to provide some funding to release grade three to six teachers for one day across the schools, so we have about one, four hundred teachers being released. That doesn't mean that they're being released for one full day at one time, they could be released for maybe one or two hours to do some professional learning in a specific content area, potentially to take a look at student data or to understand how to use Knowledge Hook, which is what we're specifically doing here. So far, eighty teachers have received formal P D in this area. We have something called the SPITL to give you the acronym, but to give you the specific name, it's the Special Program Teacher Lead in each school. The junior, the junior SPITLs were released on February fifth or sixth to receive some more professional development in their school's specific content focus, so they learned more about data or this data strand, or they learned more about spatial reasoning. They also learned how to leverage Knowledge Hook as a part of a professional learning cycle for their school. And then they identified strategies to provide interventions within their school for that specific strand. And they'll be collecting data on that, that they'll be sharing with me, that I'll be able to share at a later time. Just to give you a kind of a high-level overview of high-impact instructional practices, we spoke about them briefly last time. There's about seven or eight of them, they're listed here. That's the second component of a numeracy goal for a school, so a school may say, we're focusing on data through deliberate practice, for example. That will be something we'd be asking the staff to take a look at, or perhaps they're looking at supporting data through small group instruction. Moving along into tutoring supports, we do have a tutoring fund that the province provides us, that I have access to. And so what we've, and the province has asked us to specifically identify equity-deserving groups that may show a disproportionate outcome in their, in their achievement. So what we identified and what was shared with this board a couple of years ago, through the work of Dr. Colmore, was that we wanted to ensure that Black students had a chance to excel in the area of mathematics. So we formed a partnership and this, part of this grant is to ask us to form partnerships with community organizations to provide this support and tutoring. So we've engaged Halton Black Voices in this work. At the time, last year in October, we identified forty-eight students, thirty-nine actually came out to receive the support. Some dropped out because they had other commitments and they didn't feel that they could fulfill the level of, the level of commitment they needed to do because we were offering twelve tutoring sessions from October to January. My understanding from my conversations with the Halton Black Voices, that January tended to be a very busy month. As students were leading up towards exams, they were asking for more support. We're also looking forward to re-initiating our partnership with Learn Style through the work with special education, where we specifically work with, provide support for students with, that are identified with A S D, with autism, and specifically to support the receivens in the area of coding. Now, we received tremendous feedback last year with this initiative and looking forward to continuing that partnership this year. By way of evidence of how do we know things are going well, we are really focusing this time on student confidence and ability in mathematics and we saw that the work with Halton Black Voices specifically tended to have quite an impact on our students, as you can see in the graph here. We moved from not many students feeling very confident or extremely confident to a good majority actually feeling very confident about their abilities in mathematics as a result of the work we did. Not to be outdone in the tutoring initiative, we also have interventions happening in our schools. I shared with you last year and continue to share that Do the Math is the program we tend to use through the special education team. And Do the Math is a program that comes out of the United States, but has some tremendous outcomes for our students specifically in the area of number. We've worked with schools to help identify them, our certs right now, twenty-seven of the schools with thirty-seven certs are providing math support through the Do the Math intervention tool. We are collecting data on this, but as the students complete their cycles of intervention, the data will come to us and we'll be able to collect it and report back in June of what that looks like. Last but not least, we do have a priority school model. With the staff that I have available, we've identified four elementary schools and one secondary school to do some specific work within the school and to help support the school, because perhaps there's just a different, a different level of need at each school. Now, we worked with our research team specifically to identify the schools. We're now in the February part of our phase and I'm happy to say that all of these things. things that I mentioned were happening in September, October, November, December did happen at the schools and here's some highlights. So just so you know, about eight percent of our grade three students and ten percent of the grade six students who will be writing EQAO this year will come from a priority school. So there tends to be some robust data to come. All students, all priority schools. Previous to this, I mentioned a content focus, they've all identified data, the data strand as their specific focus. So in November, the staff that are working at these schools helped that, helped use Knowledge Hook and completed that cycle of learning to help with the interventions and provide students some feedback and how they're doing in the data strand. With more professional learning provided to staff as well, so they can continue to do some, to support their students as best as they can. By way of data, when we completed, I'm not going to get into the, all the details, but there's some data here that kind of tells you exactly what was seen in the grade three and six classes, who might need support. Those were identified and then the interventions were provided. We will have outcomes later on. We also did this in our secondary school that we've identified. At the time, seventy-six out of one hundred and ninety-three students scored seventy percent or higher. But we didn't just leave it there. What we did was use the data then to identify what areas could we actually provide extra support? And the itinerant that's dedicated to that school provided that support leading up to January. And we're going to repeat that cycle again for the semester. With some pretty promising data that hopefully will continue in the following semester. We also have a partnership with the AIM Collective. And basically what that means, we're part of a group of researchers that through our research team have been trying to develop a numeracy screening tool. That group now is working with Veretta, and that's the people who also help administer EQAO now. So they're creating a numeracy screener that's digitized. And what the data told us, we screened about twelve hundred students with the staff. And of the twelve hundred students, we identified approximately one hundred and twenty-four indicated they might benefit from more intervention. I do want to quantify that the data is based on HCDSB norms. The data that we heard was that our students tended to skew to the better. Meaning if we were compared to national norms or provincial norms, our students in general, even the ones who needed intervention would be doing pretty well in comparison. So what we did was do an HCDB, HCDSB intervention model instead. So you can see through the data here that we have quite a number of students, about seventy-five percent of our students are progressing well and aren't indicating any extra levels of support needed as they're in their, in grade kindergarten one and two.
Thank you Superintendent Skibek for your presentation. Trustees, I shall now open up the floor. Trustees, four questions. Trustee Ohan Chanara, you're the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. It's Superintendent Skibek. Amazing presentation. But you know what really stands out to me is that one slide that shows that increase of confidence. Right? To me, that was one of the best slides in this entire presentation, that it's showing that it's working and it's giving our children confidence, which will probably spill over to all kinds of other academics and sports, et cetera, et cetera. So a great presentation. All your data is amazing, but that one really stood out for me. So good job.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Ohan Chanara. Up next is Trustee Yebor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I was just wondering, you mentioned tutoring support. So I was just wondering how students are being informed of those opportunities, if you mind clarifying on that.
Superintendent Skibek. Sorry, Mr. Chair, couldn't hear the question properly.
Can you repeat the question again, please?
Yes, of course. So you mentioned tutoring supports, and I was just wondering how students are being informed of these opportunities.
Superintendent Skibek.
So typically we go through the schools, but this time we're actually working with, for tutoring support specifically for halt and black voices. The Black Symposium, Black Excellence Symposium that's happening here on Thursday will be a vehicle that we'll be using to help advertise the supports that are available. I do want to qualify that there are, there are, there are some parameters around which we would offer the tutoring support. So the province is specifically looking for students that are achieving below standard, that we're trying to get to standard. Despite what I would love to see, you know, ubiquitous access to tutoring supports, we do want to prioritize and follow the follow the model the province has asked us. So we are going to prioritize. So even when students sign up, we will be looking specifically to know who's achieving just below standard or below standard, so that we can provide them that extra support.
Thank you, Trustee Yebor. Any further questions, clarifications? Seeing none. Trustee Murphy, you're up next. Mr. Murphy.
Through you. Thank you for the presentation. I just have a general question about math support. What does the process look like to benefit from that? Does the teacher refer the child or can, can a parent request it? And then what does the support look like? Are they pulled out of the class? Is it in the class? Just a little info. Thanks.
Superintendent Skibek.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a clarifying question? Are we referring to the tutoring supports or the intervention for Do the Math?
You mentioned about the certs providing math support. So I'm just, that's the question I have about, yeah.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
So generally that starts with the teacher. What we are always, what we're always looking for to do, and we're in the process and working with our special education team as well, to develop a three-tier model of intervention. So generally speaking, what we're looking for first is the first tier venture intervention is the classroom. So what's the teacher being able to do to support the student? And that's kind of like the high-impact instructional practices, making sure that all those are taking place. If the teacher's confident that all those have been put in place, like a small group intervention is, has been, has taken place and the data is presenting still, then that conversation happens with the special education resource team at the school and the principal. And the referral happens there. But if a parent was to ask the teacher for support, I'm certain that they would receive it. As long as the school is able to provide that. In certain circumstances, the school has other, like the cert just might have a full caseload. So they might not be able to provide it at the time. It's all, it's all a function of how many people we have available to do that.
There were clarification?
Yeah, so just to follow up then. So if there were a lack of certs and there was a child that was falling behind, like getting level ones or twos, or whatever the case may be, what then, what kind of recourse do the parents have?
Superintendent Skibek.
Mr. Chair, the, the first step is always at the classroom level. So we want to make sure that all of those interventions that we have available. We are hopeful that in future time that we'll be able to support classroom teachers in implementing Do the Math as well. But first, we want to gain the confidence of the special education resource team. In the schools that are priority schools, our itinerants are running those programs. And last year, that was actually what we were able to do with ten different schools. But with the, there's not as many itinerants in math right now, so we just are running as many programs. But that typically would be the itinerants that would go into a school to help support that. The priority schools, that is the model.
Thank you. Director Klein would like to add some more context.
Kind of thought I was going to, and then I thought I was not going to. In terms of, I think you specifically noted level one and two students. Those wouldn't necessarily trigger the special education support. So I think, I think Superintendent Skibek kind of addressed it pretty fully. First call comes from lawsuit, the classroom teachers. Superintendent, but I think I clarified that.
Thank you. Vice Chair Murphy, second question?
No, that's, thank you.
Thank you. Any other trustees have questions, comments for Superintendent Skibek? Online? If not, Superintendent Skibek, this is one of the presentations I look forward to. Thank you so much for presenting this and highlighting the various tools that we use in our systems, the professional development being done across the systems and the supports for our students. And thank you for sharing the data. Data makes a lot of sense. Congratulations to our students who participated in all these competitions across the system and outside too. Well done. Keep up the good work and we look forward to hearing back again another update. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Trustees.
We now move on to item number five, delegations. We have no delegations. Item number six, consent agenda. The following items have been agreed upon, the agenda approved to stay on the consent agenda. Can we have it up, please, on the screen? Six point one, action items, six point one point one and six point one point two. Less six point one point two point four. And then we have noted items. There will be a single motion to approve action items. There will be no discussion. I will now read the motion. Resolved that the Holland Catholic District School Board approve consent agenda items six point one point one, six point one point two point one, six point one point two point two, six point one point two point three as submitted at the February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five regular board meeting. May I have a mover, please? Looking for a mover. Trustee Sanders moves. Looking for a seconder. Trustee Carabella seconds it. I'll take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Sanders, favor. Trustee Agnew. Trustee McGuire.
In favor.
Yebor.
In favor.
See Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
In favor.
Kennedy's, not, Trustee Ohan Chanara.
In favor.
Vice Chair Murphy. We have six in favor, none opposed, no extension. Motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. Shall now move on to our next order of business, which is action items. Item number nine, nine point one, school year calendar twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. Superintendent Denalfo, please speak to these items, then I will read the motion and place it on table. Superintendent Denalfo.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. I'm presenting the proposed school year calendar for twenty-five, twenty-six. The committee met on December third and January eighth with the proposed dates for the calendar. It takes into consideration that there's for secondary, one hundred and eighty-seven instructional days and ten secondary exam days. There are two PA days in elementary dedicated to reporting, one additional PA day for parent-teacher interviews, and then three mandatory professional PA days. The calendar is created with our co-terminus board and all PA days aligned, so that our cost for transportation is aligned. The proposed twenty-five, twenty-six school year calendar is being presented as an action item. Once approved, the proposed school year calendar will be forwarded to the Ministry of Education for final approval.
Thank you, Superintendent Denalfo. Trustees, do we have questions for Superintendent Denalfo? Trustee Ohan Chanara, you're.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Superintendent Denalfo, is there anything different in this year's calendar as in previous years? They're pretty much the same.
Superintendent Denalfo.
Through you, Chair. It's, it's similar to this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Ohan Chanara. Follow up? No? Any other trustees online? Questions for Superintendent Denalfo? Seeing none. I heard a sound online.
Sorry, just said no.
Thank you. I shall now read the motion. Actually, I should have read the motion, moved it and seconded it. So, but anyway, let's do it now. I shall now read the motion. Resolved that the Holland Catholic District School Board approved the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year calendar as presented. Looking for a mover, please?
I'll move it.
Trustee Ohan Chanara moves. Looking for a seconder. Trustee, Vice Chair Murphy seconds it. I shall now, since we have, any further questions? No? Okay, I shall call the vote on item nine point one. Which is the school year calendar moved by Trustee Ohan Chanara, seconded by Vice Chair Murphy. Trustee Sanders, how do you vote? Favor. Trustee Agnew's not there. Trustee, Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew's here, in favor.
Agnew's here, okay. Thank you. Trustee Yebor.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy, not here. Trustee Ohan Chanara.
In favor.
Vice Chair Murphy.
Favor.
Trustee Kelly. We have seven in favor, none opposed, no extension. Motion carries. Calendar is approved. Shall now move on to item nine point four, which was six point one point two point four. Can you just check the number, six point one? Point five. Okay. Item nine, nine point five, which was six point one point two point five, policy V dash oh four, school fundraising activities. This item has come to the board from policy and we need only a mover. Trustee Ohan Chanara, can you please read the motion?
Thank you, Mr.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Be resolved that the Holland Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that policy V dash zero four, school fundraising activities be approved.
Thank you, Trustee Ohan Chanara. We do not need a seconder. Trustee Carabella has requested that this item be removed from the consent agenda. Trustee Carabella.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Wanted to make an amendment. I wasn't at the policy meeting. I wanted to make an amendment in this policy.
Thank you, Trustee. Trustee Carabella has submitted her amendment, which has been forwarded to all trustees. Trustee Carabella, I see the amendment there and last, last time, couple of years back, I did rule it out of order because that item, that item is something for discussion and policy. It's not a small change to the policy. This is a board meeting. So I will suggest to you to move back to policy and, and have a discussion there. They all trustees can have a fulsome discussion. We have a lot more items to go through. So just, I'll pass it on to you.
Can I put the amendment on the table and see if there's a seconder and then send it back?
Okay. Can we have the amendment up?
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure if this is a point of order, but I would like to move a motion. Can I do that before Trustee Carabella puts it on the table? Okay, because I'd like to move a motion to postpone. Did you postpone and defer?
So let's take a look at the bylaws.
Yeah, it's bylaw ten point one six to postpone. It's not debatable. The only thing debatable is the time.
Point of order then.
Can we have the amendment up there? Can we have the amendment? Can we zoom into that, please? So this is the, Trustee Carabella, you put this amendment, item in red. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So if we move it and second it, we have to discuss it here at this meeting. But if you want to post, move it back to policy, that has to be the amendment we are talking about. If you move it and second it, we have to discuss it at the board meeting. But we are not planning to do that. We want to move it back to policy.
Start discussing it and then send it to policy, back to policy?
I also have a point of order, because I know through the policy meetings that it's traditional cause that before we talk about something, the amendment is that this was sent to us, the last policy, hundred percent. But it wasn't sent to all of us for the board meeting tonight, to be prepared to speak to that tonight at the board.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't.
Trustees, sorry. It was sent to trustees, sent to me just before the board meeting and I forwarded to trustees. This requires a fulsome, wholesome discussion, right? So I would suggest to you, once again, we have the amendment on the screen there. Move an amendment to move it back to policy. If not, then we go to Trustee Ohan Chanara and Trustee Ohan Chanara postpones it. So let's deal with it one at a time.
To clarify, what is your motion that?
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. Through you, Mr. Chair. So it'll be per bylaw ten point sixteen, which is postpone or defer. So I would postpone it to the policy meeting on April the eighth at seven P. or defer, so I would postpone it to the policy meeting on April the eighth at seven PM.
So it's it's.
Which is the same as.
It's the same.
Uh referring back to policy.
Yeah, I'm just following the bylaws at all, and try to be consistent for both meetings.
Okay, so I can move it if there's a seconder and then she has a motion to postpone. That's how you would do it. Because if it's not moved.
Yes, so so the easier way is just refer it back to policy and it's back in policy and then the postpone takes, it's the same thing as that. Whereas if you're moving it and seconding it here, then there's a motion to postpone, motion to postpone is not to postpone at policy, it's to postpone at the board meeting. So what makes sense is to move this back to policy, have a proper discussion there and come back. If you're postponing something here, it's not postponing at policy, it's postponing to the next board meeting. Actually is not the intent. Right? So my recommendation to you is don't use postpone because postponing to the next board meeting. You're going to send it to policy, have it back, have a discussion there, bring it back to the board, that's what we normally do with all our policies.
Right, well um I just have a better sense if it's seconded and then it goes.
Sorry, if you move and second something at the board, it stays at the board. Whereas if you move to refer back to policy, it goes right to policy and have the conversation there.
Okay, but through you. Things where we've started motions and discussed it and then decided later to send it back to policy, pretty sure.
You can't do half the work here and half the work at policy. I would
So.
Be clear and say, move and second to refer back to policy.
Okay.
Okay?
And to support that trustee Carabella, I would probably call a point of order to say that, you know, we can't call this in order, I'm not the Chair of the Board, Chair of the Policy, because we wouldn't be consistent.
Well, we have a right.
So we have done.
Respect, we have a right to bring forward amendments.
For sure, for sure, this is a substantial amendment, and as I ruled in the past, I ruled it out of order. Okay, just because it's not a small change, it has major implications, which all the trustees need to prepare and come to the meeting and have a wholesome discussion, and I think we should be fair. Right? So I would suggest going that far. And move to refer back to policy, move and second it, goes to policy, policy gets taken up later, next policy meeting, comes back to the next board meeting, nice and clean way of doing it. Trustee Carabella?
So I move that it goes back to the policy meeting.
Thank you. So move to policy. Refer, refer to policy.
Refer to.
Refer back to policy.
Refer back to policy.
So moved by trustee Carabella. Seconded, look at, may I have a seconder please? Seconded by trustee, Vice Chair Murphy. Trustee Carabella, you can speak to this. Why you want to move it back to policy?
Well, thank you Mister Chair, I do want to move it back, okay? Yeah, I don't have anything prepared for like this, referring it back to policy however.
Sorry trustee Carabella, sorry trustee Dwork, Chair Dwork, but I this if we're if we're doing a ten point one sixty postpone, it's not debatable, we don't talk to it, the only thing that we talk about is the time, if that's what we're doing.
Ten point one seven to refer, a motion to refer to a committee shall take precedence over motion to refer to a network, so I think we are going that part.
Ten point one seven, okay, alright.
Motion to refer to policy.
Uh so thank you Mister Chair, I would um didn't have a chance to read the motion but or the amendment, but there it is, and that's why it's asking that it gets referred back to policy because it's it is important, it does require discussion and explanation and an open openness to what I'm proposing, that we follow our faith in particular in fundraising, that efforts may not be directed to any registered charity or nonprofit, including subsidiaries, affiliates and associates that are.
Order Mister Chair, we're reading the amendment, I thought you said we couldn't do that.
Trustee Carabella, you're gonna.
But we can't do both.
It's a motion to.
Right, so I'm just.
Trustee Ohan Chanada is in order, trustee Carabella, please talk while we are moving back.
I'm happy to move this, to move it to the policy meeting so that we can have a further discussion, information, explanations about this amendment to to have criteria for the sanctity of life in our fundraising policy.
This motion was moved by trustee Carabella, seconded by Vice Chair Murphy. I see no other hands up, so this motion is to refer back to policy. I shall now call the vote on this item. Trustee, trustee Agnew?
I'm opposed.
Trustee McGuire?
Uh can you come back?
Trustee Yaboha?
Can I abstain?
Sure. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Sorry, point of clarification, we're voting on sending it back to policy, is that correct? As opposed to amending it now?
You're not amending, we're sending it back to policy. How do you vote?
I'm opposed to that.
Trustee Kennedy, not there. Trustee Ohan Chanada?
I'm in favor.
Uh Vice Chair Murphy?
Favor.
Trustee Kelly? Trustee Sanders, in favor. Trustee McGuire?
Oppose.
So we have four in favor, three opposed, motion carries. Items six, item nine point five, six point one point two point five, policy V dash oh four, school fundraising activities will be moved to policy. Shall move on to our next order of business.
Point of clarification?
We can't be discussing that, but question?
No, well, it's more about ten point one six specifically.
Ten point one six?
Um, you know what, it's fine, I'll ask you.
Ten point one six? Okay, there's no ten point one six.
Okay, um, I'm just, I'm just confused as to when that gets used, um.
Oh, ten point one six?
Yeah, like, um, at any point if someone has an amendment, I could just override it and ask to postpone it, is that how that works?
Yes, if there's a motion on table, you can put a motion to postpone. Can only postpone the time. Okay? Only the time can change.
Point of clarification though, but the point of clarification is you still have to have a vote.
Yeah, you still have.
For the amendment to postpone, and it has to pass.
Yep.
If it doesn't pass, then that doesn't get postponed.
But I guess what I'm thinking out loud here, can we just perpetually postpone?
No.
An amendment?
No.
Okay, is there a limit?
There there is a there are further definitions of postpone to lay on the table to you postpone something, you only debate the time, nothing else, so. So we'll talk about it offline, okay, let me, I need to brush up on my rules. Thank you, our next order of business is staff reports, ten point one, request for use of twenty twenty four, twenty five unallocated reserves, Superintendent Loft, please present your report.
Uh thank you through you Chair, please find the staff report titled Request for Use of Twenty Four, Twenty Five Unallocated Reserves. Senior staff has met and discussed the potential use of reserves to meet some system needs. Building security upgrades of a hundred thousand, attendance support positions of two hundred and fifty thousand, and technology upgrades totaling six hundred and fourteen thousand, which will be split fifty fifty between the school and the central six hundred and fourteen thousand. Mister Chair, I have questions.
Thank you Superintendent Loft, trustees, do we have questions for Superintendent Loft, I see trustee, Vice Chair Murphy, your hand is up? Yeah, go ahead, you have the floor.
I don't, I don't have, oh, I didn't see it. One of the uses was for attendance support, so I'd just like some clarity, that's two roles. And is that their annual salary? And is there a term for these roles? And what exactly is the role, thank you.
Superintendent Loft, uh thank you through you Chair, I'll refer to
Through you Chair?
Uh go ahead, Superintendent Oldman.
Thank you through you, yeah, so the the attendance support program is required by P P M, which before it was required by P P M, we have had a a program underway, we've spoken about that here, I think that the the intent of the program is really to be supportive in nature, but also to really inspire consistent and regular attendance of our staff members, supporting most notably our, our, you know, customer, our students. And so this is to help make sure that our program can be as robust as and effective as possible.
Thank you, Vice Chair Murphy.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying that, just to follow up, how many attendance support positions do we currently have?
Yeah, so no. Through you Chair, my apologies, so no one is solely dedicated to attendance support. These folks are often the individuals who are also responding to those who are utilizing the sick leave management programs that are prescribed centrally, so currently there are three serving the entire system. And I think we've shared previously sixteen point six is the average utilization across our system, that's all positions, so really I think we we saw a yielded result in the past year when we resumed the program, but it's only as as well as we can, I think, support the program itself and its effectiveness, so that that was the the intent there, I think that's actually come through discussion with trustees.
Uh Vice Chair Murphy?
Yeah, just the, yeah, just the last question, no, that that's helps a lot, just the last question is, are these positions going to be like ongoing indefinitely, or are they fulfilling a certain you know, current situation, I guess, for lack of better words?
Superintendent Oldman?
Through you Chair, yeah, these would be permanent positions. Yeah, thank you, that's everything.
Thank you, up next is trustee Sanders, trustee Sanders, you have the floor?
Sorry, I just, I didn't understand, so we're hiring two positions and we're allocating two hundred and fifty thousand for these positions? Is that, sorry, just to clarify?
Superintendent Oldman?
Through you Chair, that's correct, that's inclusive of the cost of benefits as well, trustee Sanders.
Thank you.
And sorry, just so I, I, what, that's a fairly high salary, what what qualifications would they have? That would, that would warrant that kind of salary?
Superintendent Loft or Superintendent Oldman?
Through you Chair, without qualifying the qualification that we require, it would be the same qualifications of the existing staff at the existing salary here, I'm happy to share the job description through you Chair if that's so required.
And trustee Sanders has specified.
Yes, please.
It includes salary benefits and everything that goes on.
Yeah, no, I'd like to get some details, yeah, yeah, thank you.
Any further comments Superintendent Oldman, or any further comments, no?
Can I, may I inquire Chair?
Sure.
Just in the the purpose, I guess of the obviously this position is within our existing equity and and within the role, so I'm just seeking clarity on the job description itself.
Right, go ahead. You have a question?
I guess it's a question out, yeah.
So what's the question Superintendent Oldman?
I'm I'm just trying to understand the the exercise in the job description.
The purpose?
If I may.
Uh trustee Sanders, Superintendent Oldman is asking the purpose of the job description.
Yeah, it just seems like a very high salary, like it's higher than our, I think our most experienced teachers would be paid, so I'm just wondering what what would they be bringing to this position that would warrant the job description would help? And maybe even the description of the people we have, what skills they have, I think that's that's what I'm looking for.
Trustee Sanders, I think we are getting into the weeds here, this is more of a questions them in the job description, I don't think trustees get to look at job descriptions, but we do get to look at the budgets and ask questions on that, so I'm not qualified enough to know the details of the of a job for for a particular positions, and I don't intend to be, but I'm just wondering the purpose of that.
Well, just for clarity, I'd like to know.
Superintendent Director Klein?
I I I don't know if we've done that before, we shared job descriptions with I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't see the point, to be honest, I think this is a position that we have discussed in this room before because it is an issue of concern not only at this board, but at every board that I've that I believe in this province. And to have staff who are trained in a competitive market, who are trained in the skills and what they need to do to help alleviate this, is first of all, money well spent in terms of return on investment. And I think we have to rely on the expertise of our H R and our our business departments to ensure that they are properly compensated. Other boards are doing many of the same things, again, we're in a competitive market, and I I, we 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 can't lowball this, and we, I think we need to make sure we're getting quality and getting the best for the the money that we have.
Thank you Director Klein. You are, you want a question for clarification?
I appreciate what the director is saying, but I think given that we are trustees, we are responsible for the payments that goes out of the board, my concern is that this seems to be a fairly high amount of money, so there must be some kind of qualifications that would warrant this kind of pay, so what I would like, I think for clarity, and I think it's important for, you know, to be open, to be clear, what exactly would warrant this high salary, because I think that's important, I think that's something I would like to know, and I think other trustees would like to know. Because, you know, i- in the job market, you know, you normally have to justify a position, I know that's something I do every day. And I think that it would be important for this table to sort of get at least an idea, you know, as best you can, is what led to this decision and this amount of money.
Thank you trustee Sanders for your comment, Director Klein.
I'm not sure if I'm hearing justify, the question around justifying this, I think the conversation around justifying this began months ago and continued over the last few months, and I think it still exists today. The 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 burden and the debt that is being incurred by this board and others is almost insurmountable. It's bleeding boards around the province. We're not seeing leadership anywhere else, and so I think even at the same room, it's been brought up by others as an opportunity to invest so that we can save. So the idea that this is novel, I think, is is certainly well understood, and I think it's wise. I'm not sure if we want to add anything more in terms of the generalities around this, about who we, who, skill sets that we would be looking for.
Thank you trustee Sanders.
Yes.
Director Klein, thank you Director Klein, thank you trustee Sanders, up next trustee Kennedy, you have the floor?
Thank you through you Mister Chair, just so I understand, unallocated reserves, just not a term I was too familiar with, is that part of our normal forty two million of reserves that are in a section that are called unallocated reserves?
Superintendent Loft?
Yeah, through Chair two, trustee Kennedy, it's the, I turned back now to when we talked about it in at revised, there was about nine hundred and sixty four thousand at the very top, so it wasn't put away for our two percent, it was basically put into, for lack of a better term, your bank account, but we haven't earmarked it for anything, so we left it there back in December, so we could kind of have more of a fulsome discussion if we want to deploy those reserves and how we deploy them to to talk around the senior table as to the best use of that money, so we never did deploy them at that time, we just left them unallocated. I could show you after, like where it is on that chart that we talked about back in in December. Go ahead.
Is it under operating reserves then?
No, it's not, no.
So it's not in the forty two?
It's in the forty two, so the forty two includes everything, right? So if you have our operating, we have our operating right now at the two percent, right, I think it's around that eight point seven or so. This is not part of that eight point seven, this is the another amount, it is part of the forty two, trustee Kennedy, it's just not in the operating reserve portion.
Thank you. I will go to trustee Carabella and then come back to trustees again, trustee Carabella, you have the floor?
Thank you Mister Chair, I wanted to ask about the the improved access to modern technology and the way that you're now going to do it collaborative with the schools, I'm wondering if they know about it, if you got feedback, how are they going to manage that that they weren't expecting? Thank you.
Superintendent Loft?
Thank you through you Chair, we have talked to some principals on it as well, talked to some of the leadership, the thing is though everyone, I can't bring this forward until it's approved. So I can't bring it out to all the schools unless we approve it here. So what we, there's been a couple of kind of larger things, end of life of some of our iPads, so they're no longer being updated, so we have to replace a number of our iPads. And it's another problem we have is Windows eleven, some of our computers. And it's another problem we have is Windows eleven. Some of our computers won't be able to update to Windows eleven. Having said that, there has been an extension on that. So we still have a couple of years to get that up to date. So those are the two major things that's kind of prompted this this strategy of of kind of helping the schools out, almost fifty-fifty. We'll put fifty percent in, schools put fifty percent in, to help them with some of their technology issues.
Trustee Carabella?
But to answer your question, they don't know. Haven't found out yet until we get this part done here first.
Go ahead, Trustee Carabella.
Okay, so follow up is they don't know yet. So and what would be their usual way? Would, what would be their usual way? If you didn't do this half and half, were they paying full or were they paying nothing?
Through you Chair.
Yeah, good.
They'd be paying the full cost of the iPad or the computer, whatever one or technology. I'm saying iPads because that's a large one for the elementary panel especially. And secondary is more on the on the laptops, or not laptops, but the Windows computers. So they would be responsible for it all. This is a way to kind of help them out over and above. Yeah.
Thank you. Vice Chair Murphy, you have your hand up? Okay. Up next is Trustee Kennedy, Trustee Saunders?
Just to clarify, will you be able to provide this information? And if not, why are we not being transparent on this?
You are talking about job descriptions?
Yes.
Okay, I'll be clear about it, Trustee Saunders. We are trustees. We are not, our role is not to get into the weeds and look at purchase order, job description. We have hired one professional to look after this system, and that's Director Klein. It's his job and his team who's supposed to go down and break it down into into individual roles and responsibilities. So those are very specialized roles. I don't think I'm qualified to look into a particular superintendent's or staff qualification and requirement. And I would like all trustees to respect what is in the Education Act. That authority is given to our Director, and it's very clear that our Director has to make those decisions for the system. Okay, so I hope all of us are understanding very, very clearly. So you have a further question?
No, we just, so just we're not going to be transparent on this.
I don't think that's the question of transparency at all. And this is, there's no question of transparency. Okay, because all school boards have a Director, and our role as trustees is to entrust and make sure that that the Director hires appropriate staff. And if that's not happening, that's a problem. Do you have a problem with that? Then then we should talk about it in camera. I don't think we we have a have a Director who we need to trust and put that in his hand with all his staff. Thank you. Trustee Kennedy.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So just wondering about, so that nine hundred and sixty-four thousand will come out of reserves. How come we didn't know this when we did the revised estimates in December?
You sure? We did know, Rob. We did, we knew and we didn't know. We were looking at this. We left it unallocated. So worst case, we'd come at the estimates or at the budget, and we would have reallocated that into whatever. But we left it there to kind of talk at the senior table, to say, is there a need in the system? Should we be looking at deploying some of these reserves? So we didn't have the time in December. There's a lot of things going on to kind of have a more plan as to how we would deploy those reserves. So we held it until we could talk about it in January, and then we're bringing it here today. So it was unallocated, Trustee Kennedy. It was more of a trying to get a more fulsome idea of how we, if A, we want to utilize it, and B, if we do, how will we utilize it? So a couple of big things, being the end of life for the iPads, where some, that's why it's a large portion of it, and the Windows eleven issue were two big ones, I think, that are more kind of like, I'm not saying one and done, because eventually five or six, seven years, we're never going to have the same problem again. But at least this is something that's kind of, like, it's utilized on something for technology that's going to be utilized for the next number of years and not a carryforward impact to the board.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy.
So just wondering, so if if the numbers were in the budget, say, for June and December, would we have had a budget that was not balanced?
Good. We would have had a non, we would have had a compliant budget. It just would have been higher by nine hundred and sixty-four thousand. It would not have been balanced.
So just my my concern is if we, we have a budget, right? We're supposed to stick to the budget. June can change to December a lot.
Yeah.
Trustees vote in June. It doesn't necessarily mean the same thing we'll have in December, like PD increase, for example, substantially. And then if we find things during the year, like, that we want to do later, we simply pull them out of reserves. When we, if we allocated them before, it would have been non, it wouldn't have been a balanced budget. So what's to stop in the future from just finding things, taking them out of reserves during the year, and we're never going to have an unbalanced budget until we blow through all the reserves? That'd be my concern, if we keep this pattern up.
It's Superintendent Loft?
Sorry, it's it's presented to trustees, Trustee Kennedy. It's it's funding that's there. There is a healthy amount. There's a kind of a one and done kind of need, like, a large part of this. Six fourteen is a one and done. One hundred is a one and done. It's not a carryforward commitment to the board. That's what at least a large part of the thought process was, so that would be something that it would be specific to our schools, specific to our students, and it would be something that we wouldn't have a burden beyond the usage of the funding today.
One off, exactly, yeah. Okay. Up next, Trustee O'Angelo.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So I think we're all invited, but I did attend, I don't know, a two-hour seminar on the attendance program. And I learned a lot that I didn't even know, that it's, you know, almost a billion-dollar program, and that this is not just a one and done, send out the software. It's an actual managing this entire program, which is huge, right? It's like, can't eat an elephant, right? Only one bite at a time. So because I was able to sit in that, I kind of understood a little more fulsome how it's very important. So I completely support that hundred percent.
Thank you, Trustee O'Angelo. Any other trustees have questions? Trustee Kennedy, your hand is still up there. Okay. Thank you Superintendent Loft for answering all the questions. Thank you trustees for the questions. We shall now move on to next order of business. Item number eleven, information items, eleven point one, Director's Report. Director Klein, please present your report.
Thank you Chair.
Sorry about that. Thank you Chair. I would invite us to take a look at the report before us. Fairly straightforward. I do want to highlight a few things. We have heard in the past about the Halton Industry Education Council, and that was given the, say, the contract or the green light throughout the entire province of Ontario. So I think that says a lot about the the strength of the HIEC to help move forward with career coaching services for grade nine and ten here in Ontario. And I do know for a fact that other provinces have engaged with HIEC as well to do that. It says a lot about the community, and our board was one of the founding partners with HIEC well over thirty years ago, I think thirty-five years. They're on the thirty-fifth anniversary. So it's pretty amazing. And HIEC was selected, and its mandate is to deliver career coaching services to our grade nine and ten students for the twenty-five or twenty-four, twenty-five school year. I don't want to overstate that in terms of the the capacity of that, because that's a lot of work, and it is one step at a time. It's unfolding, and in fact, at our school board, we're beginning with two of our high schools, Notre Dame and St. Francis Xavier. And this coaching will consist of a brief introduction later in the semester by a HIEC career coach facilitator, focusing primarily on the lay of the land here in Halton region, in what's known as an LMI or the labor market information, something many of us would say we did not get when we were in high school, a sense of what is out there in terms of the market. And HIEC will also be providing handouts and resources for educators as well to help support and to help foster that. And as the semester goes along, those coaches will work with the smaller groups as well. So we're very happy to to give an example of how we're working with the community and how we're working to ensure that our students have a greater clarity in terms of the pathway ahead for them. We're well aware that on Christmas Eve, Pope Francis took the first steps in terms of our Jubilee Year, and the Jubilee Cross is something that you're aware of that reflects this Jubilee of Hope. It also hearkens back to a time as the dark clouds of COVID fell upon us, and it's kind of interesting to see that this school that was where the cross had ended years ago is where we started up in this year of hope, not just for ourselves, but hope for the world. And there's a picture there in terms of how we've started off a little less known than there is today, when that was taken days ago. There are themes that our board has identified as well for students and for staff over the next year, because the Jubilee Year ends at the end of Advent of next, of this year. And the themes are as follows: We are pilgrims, solidarity, humility, and human dignity. The ability for us to ensure that the faith is passed on requires us to offer for our adults opportunities for faith formation as well, to hone the fires and to ensure that our staff is well-versed in theology and well-versed in church teachings, giving the opportunity to discern and to pray. So just to highlight a few things in terms of AFF or Adult Faith Formation. The session on Agape was led by School Chaplains Andrea Taylor and Rhi O'Connell. And this event allowed participants to more fully understand our focus of our theological theme, specifically love kindness, within the areas of our Catholic social teachings. The chaplains continue to support the faith life of our schools, certainly celebrate and very grateful for our chaplains. Most recently, the liturgies that were part of our PD days were, again, led by and written by them. Starting in March, we'll begin what's known as a celebration or Heroes of Hope, again, with the Jubilee Year's theme of hope throughout the board. This will provide an opportunity, I think there's a leak, for school communities to identify and honor everyday heroes of hope. It will involve sharing stories at each of our school communities regarding those people who have demonstrated kindness and love of neighbor. Very happy to note that Harmony Movement, that this year's Leadership and Education Award from Harmony Movement, I invite you to check out their webpage in terms of the work they do that's, again, focusing on social justice and creating a more equitable community. That at their Leadership and Education Award, the award will be given to Amanda Goncalves, the Curriculum Consultant for Equity and Inclusion at our board, at its upcoming Educators Anti-Racism Conference, February the twenty-first. Always good to celebrate staff members, and I'd like to say that she is celebrated for her outstanding leadership in various capacities, but in particular in advancing equity, diversity, and inclusion. Her initiatives, including the establishment of the Black Empowered United Students Board-wide group and the Black Excellence Symposium, have created valuable opportunities for our students to lead and drive positive change. Symposium, in fact, is coming up in two days. And by amplifying the voices of marginalized students and nurturing a culture of belonging and respect, Amanda has done a lot to influence the school communities, not just here, but throughout Halton region. This was one of those items that we heard about and sort of popped the champagne, and then I thought it would be echoed somewhere, either through media or somewhere else. So I think other items in the news might have stifled it a bit, but it was great news at the end of January, where we had a slew of memos and emails from the Ministry of Education giving us some good news. So we received from the Capital and Business Support Division of the Ministry of Education, the good news that two of our capital priority submissions received approval. And the first was for an additional section being added to Our Lady of Victory Catholic Elementary School in Milton. Of course, we made the case for that over the last year, pitched it, and then we were given the green light. This would consist of two hundred and seventy-six pupil addition, some renovations, as well as the addition of a five-room childcare center. The ministry also announced funding for the construction of a brand-new elementary school, given the poetic name North Oakville Number Three Catholic Elementary School. This is a six hundred and seventy-one pupil place elementary school. It will also have a daycare attached to it as well. There were, I believe, thirty-one ex projects that were greenlit by the province. So the fact that we had these, we're very grateful for. Beyond us with the GTA, I don't think there's anybody else that got that. Certainly areas in the province that are expanding at a massive rate, you wouldn't be surprised, have got some. So we're very excited that we were able to to get this and very grateful for it as well. So thus, end of the report.
Thank you Director Klein. Trustees, you have questions for Director Klein on his report? Trustee Carabella, you have a hand up?
Thank you. Thank you Director for that great news for for Oakville. My question is regarding the the H I E C, the Halton Industry Education Council. So this is going to be open to all grade nine and ten students? Are there qualifications for which students can participate in this coaching?
Director Klein?
In terms of the specifics of that, thank you for the question. I'm going to surprise and shock and embarrass Superintendent Del Sorto for one moment. In terms of the HIEC, the grade nine and ten coaching for the students, is there within that some form of gatekeeping for those who will get that, that coaching event? I know it's not necessarily one-to-one. As I did say, that's not, we're not going to overplay the fact that every student in grade nine and ten is getting their personal coach, and that we are starting in baby steps at the two schools, and that those will initially be really resourcing of staff to support that, and then small groups. But within that as well, I think it does fit in within the the programming in terms of careers, but I'll let you get get the details. I believe it is open for all, but I just want to get that detail.
Thank you.
Superintendent Del Sorto?
Thank you, and through you Chair. When it comes to the career coaching, it is, schools have to have it available, so schools can make the decision. What we want to do is, as we've partnered with HIEC, we want to pilot to see the pros and the cons and how to go about by really having an effective coaching session. So some of the, the rules are that for every one student, sorry, for every one coach, it's six students. But you can put, let's say, six coaches in an auditorium and invite the classes in, and then the kids could listen to the various coaches. The other important thing to recognize, as this is available to all schools, what it's really about is looking at the labor market for our region, and that the coaches are going to be reinforcing that labor need within the region. And it's basically to encourage the kids to live in the region that they grew up in and participate in it that way as well.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella.
Yeah, okay, so my understanding is then it's open to, like, all the kids in grade nine and ten?
We are focusing, sorry.
On those, within the piloting of those two schools. And then I think part of the reflection of that is to see how that can be expanded, hopefully, right?
Yeah.
Because it is a bit of supply and demand, too. The coaches, you know, the the HIEC is helping supply the coaches. Coaches are coming from the community and coming from the private sector and industry. So, yeah, I think that's the case.
Perfect. And then my follow-up question is, so is this, is this funded by the government then?
Yes, it is. Yeah, I'm not sure if Superintendent Del Sorto wants to add to either of that, the funding, but, yeah, we got the money for it. And then Superintendent, or HIEC certainly got money for that as well. But go ahead.
Thank you, and through you Chair. The question about nine and ten, we're focusing on the career classes, so that's most of grade tens. Although, any student that would like one and wants to participate, because it's available to schools, work with their guidance counselors. But this year, we're piloting to see the nuts and bolts of it before we can really roll it out in the big way that you're thinking. In terms of the funding, it is funded by the Ministry of Education.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. Any further verifications? Okay. Thank you, Director Klein, for your report. I see no other further hands up. But do thank Amanda Goncalves on her winning the award. Very proud of that. So thank you for that. But do thank Amanda Goncalves on her winning the award, very proud of that, so thank you for that. We shall now move on to item 11.3, Appointment of Student Trustees 2025-26 Superintendent Del Sordo, sorry. Oh, sorry, 11.2, 2025-26 Budget Estimate, Schedule and Consultation Superintendent Loft, sorry about that.
Okay, through you Chair. Please find attached an information report, updating trustees on preliminary plan for the upcoming 2526 budget period. As well as a copy of the Ministry of Education's 2526 Education Funding Consultation Guide. The Chair and the Vice Chair will be asked to discuss the budget objectives with staff. And trustees will be asked to participate in a trustee budget working group, working group. Looking at right now, May, but having said that, there's a couple other things I want to highlight. Senior staff will establish the operating budget priorities based on the multi-year strategic plan for the 2526 school year in February. So now we're working on that now. PVPs have been asked to participate in budget discussions, so we'll have a group of that. We're also going to extend that this year as well to the trustees will be asked to participate. Senior staff will meet regularly to discuss the budget process. Public input and consultation through an online survey will occur in March, we're working on that right now. 2526, the Core Ed announcement, so this is the big unknown at this time. So given that the election is imminent, we hope to find more information about when the funding will be announced for Core Ed this year. Formerly known as the GSNs sometime after the election, but it could be later this year due to the election. Similar to other years, we're going to be having a budget presentation to the Special Education Advisory Committee or CIAP. Tentatively, we've had that scheduled for April 28th of 2025. And a preliminary budget will be presented to trustees in early June, now this will require a special board meeting. Before we present the final budget, tentatively scheduled for June 17th, a regular board meeting for final board approval. Mr. Chair?
Thank you Superintendent Loft, we have a plan in place, trustees, do you have questions, suggestions for Superintendent Loft? Please raise your hand. In the chat, trustee Carabella, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm just trying to see, the first time that trustees get involved is going to be in March. March.
Correct.
Because in May, it says here, we're going to have trustee budget working session. So how are we going to be involved in March? Is that we're going to be a working session as well, or it says here trustee consultations?
So, good, Mr. Chair, through you to trustee Carabella. The idea is something similar to what we do with the principals, so not all trustees, but almost have a group. We'll talk to the Chair and kind of arrange something, Mr. Chair, as to who will be on that committee to kind of. Help with the budget process and bring things back so we can look at it. Having everyone at the as part of it might not be. Doable or advantageous for the process, but at least having input, I think would be wise. Similar to what we learned that last year with having the principals and vice principals involved. And there was a comment around this table, both trustees, and we took it to heart and we're here presenting it. It's something we haven't done before, trustee.
Follow-up, trustee Carabella, okay, trustee Kennedy?
That was actually my question, so it's March, not May, but I heard May. So maybe to the Chair then, how will you decide on the budget working group? Will it be all trustees who are interested or only three?
Let the question be asked first.
I'm asking now.
I'll put it out to trustees and we wanted to be something that trustees want to participate, be a part of process. We have a couple of sessions for trustees, Superintendent Loft?
Yeah, there are normal ones that we normally have with the Chair.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's a good thing to put it out to trustees, if you're involved, you want to participate and want to contribute to it. Let's, let's, you know, go, no problem, okay, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you Superintendent Loft for presenting the schedule and consultation, we shall now move on to item 11.3. Appointment of Student Trustees 25, 2025-26 Superintendent Del Sordo presented partial report before, please continue.
Thank you, through you Chair. This is really to inform the trustees of the 2025 student trustees, you met two of the three. This was on Wednesday, February 12th. The election of the student trustees for the 2526 school year took place virtually. The secondary schools submitted the name of candidates, all of whom were of excellent caliber, demonstrating a commitment to Catholic education. As well as extensive involvement in their respective school and community. We are thrilled by the caliber of our students and they are eager and excited and I'm open to any questions.
Thank you Superintendent Del Sordo, trustees, any questions regarding the. Trustee McGuire, you're the floor.
Yeah, thank you through you Chair, I just wanted to, not necessarily a question, but just a comment. I just want to congratulate all of the new incoming student trustees. As a student trustee myself, this role has completely changed my life and it's been such a pleasure to be able to represent the students of Oakville. And I know that the three of you will all do wonderful things, I've worked with you all on Senate in one way or another. And you guys are such wonderful leaders. I'm sure that you guys are going to do so well on Senate and I'm also proud of you and I'm excited to initiate the transition process, thanks.
Thank you trustee McGuire, we are really proud of our student trustees, thank you for that, trustee Kennedy?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, just to Superintendent Del Sordo, I know you've explained this before, I just forget. So if we take an example like Oakville, we have a few high schools, there are different population sizes. How does it work for schools like that, might be smaller, schools that are larger, how do they pick one candidate? How does that work for, let's just say Burlington, whatever one?
Superintendent Del Sordo?
Thank you, and through you Chair, thank you trustee Kennedy. The process for nominations are that every school would have applicants put in their names forward. The school principal with another staff member and students would then hold some kind of election or speech. And they would choose the one candidate through their school council that best represents their school and put that name forward. Once those names are forward, so one or from each school or two or from each school. They then present to the Senate. The Senate, which is comprised of all students from grade nine to 12. Listening to the speeches and then ask questions about their speeches. And then ask questions about the role and see if they're fit, and then they would vote in a closed ballot. The ballots are given to the teacher advisors and the chaplain, and then they would announce the three winners or the three successful candidates.
Thank you trustee Kennedy.
So just curious, so the Senate, is the Senate equal amounts per school, Senate members, or is the Senate based on?
So the Senate would be equal in numbers, so it's per every grade, so you have a grade nine rep, a grade 10 rep, a grade 11 rep, a grade 12 rep.
Thank you, up next trustee aboard?
Thank you through you Chair, I just want to hop on, hop onto what Lauren was saying earlier. But yeah, with my role as a student trustee, I've learned a lot and it's been so much fun. And honestly, watching you three in the Senate meetings, you guys are always so eager and always so willing to add your input and, you know, learn. And I'm just really proud of you three and you guys did amazing on your speeches and I can't wait to see you guys do. And if you guys ever need help, me, Lauren, Sophia, I know we're always there for you guys.
Thank you, I see no other hand up, so Superintendent Del Sordo, thank you for presenting your report. And we look forward to our new student trustees joining us soon. With that, we move on to our next order of business, which is miscellaneous information, 12.1, Student Trustee Update. Student trustees, please present your report.
All right, so unfortunately Sophia could not attend tonight, so I'm going to present her part of the reports to the achieving portion. So from February 6th to 8th, several HDSB students attended our DECA Provincials 2025. DECA is a business case competition that many students present. Oh, sorry, I think I was laying out there. Anyway, DECA is a business case competition that many students within our board participate in, either through their business chism or out of their. Out of just as a general club within their school. And they compete in many different areas related to business, so for example hospitality and business or problem solving might be one. So we are proud to say that after rigorous testing, exams, and case practices, that 11 HDSB students were invited to attend DECA's International Career Development Conference. ID, ICDC in Orlando, Florida in April. Students also received medals for cases exams and placed nine out of 10 overall, bringing great pride to the HDSB on the province-wide stage. So this is really incredible achievements and stuff, these students are now going to compete against some of the top DECA competitors in the entire world, which is amazing. As student trustees, we are so proud and excited to see all the hard work that these students have put in. And we are also grateful to the development of this organization and what it provides for students in Ontario. And it just kind of encourages students to continue their success through DECA. Throughout the coming years and we encourage all students, if they're interested, to get involved in DECA at their school. And I'll pass the next session off to Isabel.
Yeah, so with the pillar of believing, you know, students came out of a really stressful time, which was the exam season. And HDSB staff had continued to support students through faith and prayer. So chaplains opened their doors for students to hold weekly masses where anyone is able to drop in and participate in prayers within their school communities. Also, some schools held liturgies welcoming new students back and students back from the exam season, from the short break. Also wishing us well as we continue through the school year. And with these actions of faith, it's really clear that our schools are committed to helping us to grow in our faith and foster our inner program of hope. In accordance with this Jubilee Year. And so moving along to Belonging, in the last couple of weeks, students have had the chance to settle back into their new classes. And again, HDSB staff have been working really hard to ensure that students are well-prepared for what's to come this semester. So Director Klein had mentioned this earlier, but this Thursday, February 20th, the Black Empowered United Students, for short BS. Will be holding the second Black Excellence Student Symposium. And it's really important because it kind of gives students, Black students, a lot of ways to learn about their culture. Promote leadership, foster strong senses of identity and build really great communities. And kind of create conversations for these students to feel like they really belong within their schools. So again, there's a lot of interactive workshops, motivational sessions, and a lot of activities that these students can participate in. That will allow them to learn about their culture and a lot of different things that happen within the Black community. So I'll hand it on to Lauren for becoming.
Yeah, and I'm going to finish off our report with the becoming section. So this weekend, the student trustees attended our Education Action Conference through OXDAECO, which stands for Ontario Student Trustees Association. Essentially, this, these conferences occur three times a year. This one occurred in Ottawa and this one's called our Education Action Conference. So we're essentially, we assemble with other student trustees from throughout the province to engage in many different kinds of professional development to help us develop within our roles. So me and Isabel were able to attend this conference and hear many different presentations such as OXA Talks. Which are essentially kind of a TED Talk-style presentation where student trustees from other boards present their different initiatives that they engage in within their school boards. Which was a really great way to kind of inspire us to take our own action at our board. As well, we also heard presentations from the Directors of Education. Of the Ottawa Carlton and the Ottawa Catholic School Boards. On different issues such as AI and 21st century education. The Catholic Cabinet, which I am a part of as well, also created many different sessions for student trustees, specifically Catholic student trustees on professional development. Where we focus on the idea of stakeholder engagement and student trustees working with stakeholders. So for example, one of our professional development sessions was themed around Shark Tank to kind of. Help student trustees conceptualize the idea of what an educational stakeholder is and how we can engage with them. So overall, the ability to. Uh, sorry, overall, the ability to attend these conferences was an incredible blessing and stuff. We really learn and gain a lot from this and I know that Ropierre, Maya, Sophia, and Bellini will learn quite a bit from. When they attend these conferences next year and actually when they come to AGM with us in the spring. So we really appreciate the board putting the time and money into doing this.
Thank you student trustees for presenting your report, trustees, any questions for our student trustees or comments? Seeing none, thank you once again, student trustees for presenting your report and bringing student voice to the board. With that, we shall move on to item 12.2, OCSTA Update, trustee Ohan Chanada, do you have an update?
I do, thank you, I do have a verbal update, right now, really, the discussion is the AGM that's happening in Markham. From May 1st to 3rd, let's hope all the snow is melted by May. During that time, very proud to say that our Halton Catholic District School Board trustees and staff together have prepared some resolutions. That will be presented during this AGM, so those of you that have not signed up and you're wishing to go, please sign up. And CCSTA, which is happening in Halifax, I believe the deadline to sign up at a discounted rate would be March 31st. So again, if you have not and you're intending to go, please respond to Elizabeth's email and we can get that going. So any questions, concerns, comments?
Thank you trustee Ohan Chanada, any questions, comments for trustee Ohan Chanada? Trustee Carabella?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, could trustee Ohan Chanada go through the process of how these motions are put forward? Are they voted on by everyone there?
Thank you trustee Carabella, it, what they'll do is they'll put them all together and they kind of group them into same kind of themes. The package will go out to all the attendees and all the trustees and at that point during the actual conference. You can get up and speak to it if anyone has any questions on your resolution. Most of the time, and Chair Dworkin confirmed that with me, we've been to many of them. They pretty much flow through and over to OXDA and they designate it to a political advocacy committee. As OXDA lobbies on our behalf on many, many different ways, so that's kind of how they do it.
So to follow up, every resolution submitted basically does end up somewhere to be logged.
Usually, usually, once we submit a talk, so they have like a, let's call it a resolution committee, for lack of a better word. They go through them all, they put them together, if there was ever a resolution they couldn't bring forward, they would, they would go back to the board and say, no, I'm sorry. You need to add this or remove this or whatever.
As I said, that resolutions of a similar nature will be clubbed together sometimes because boards can submit the same exact thing, so. Yeah, it's quite a process, it's quite a.
We've been doing very, like the last two or three years, we've really, you know, sent a lot of resolutions forward that are continuing, they use for lobbying. To our government to make changes to our education, that's good.
Mainly funding.
We need lots of funding, lots of money.
So thank you for that update, trustees, any further questions for trustee Ohan Chanada? Seeing none, we shall move on to our next item, which is correspondence, we have no correspondence tonight. Item number 14, open question period, Director Klein, have we received any questions for open question period?
I don't think so, okay.
Thank you Director Klein, our next order of business is in camera, we have to go in camera to finish business there. So may I have a motion to move back in camera? Trustee Saunders moves, looking for a seconder. I will second it. All in favor? Anybody opposed?